Good evening, everyone. My name is Becky Cox. And I'm with the League of Women Voters. And I would like to welcome all of you here this evening. You were very brave to come out in the rain. Not the wind yet, but at least got some rain. And just out of curiosity, say, how many of you were here for the City Council Forum? Oh, good for you guys! Great, that's fabulous. So I have another round for you this evening. And this particular forum is sponsored by a coalition of community groups that we got together and felt it was very important for you people to know your candidates, to make a good vote. Yeah, excuse me. And the coalition consists of the League of Women Voters. And with those of you from the League, please raise your hand. We have Meg Van Wee, Danielle Butts, and Gail Lansing, and myself from the League. And we have from the Highline Times, Ken Robinson, Seattle South Side Chamber of Commerce, Andrea Rae.
Where'd she go?
I'm here.
Oh, there you are, right over there. And Burean Library, Thomas Rainer. There he is, back in the back. And from KNKS, Ashley Rose, who's going to be our moderator today. And representing the citizens of Highline as an activist par excellence is Rose Parker. And the forum this evening will be televised or recorded by V-Town Blog. And Scott Shaker is editing the film. And currently, we're live and operating. Now, you were given cards to fill out. And Gail and Meg will bring the cards up to the table. If you have one written out, just hold it up and they'll come get it, take it with them to the, bring them up here at the table. And we are going to screen the questions when they come up. And part of that is not to handicap anybody from asking a question, but to avoid due diligence and make sure we have a variety of issues that are brought forth for the people. And so the screeners who are doing this work is Andrea and Ken are the ones that are going to screen the questions. And our moderator this evening is Ashley Rose. And she is from KNKS. Wait, K-N-P-I, I got it right. And she's been with them for seven years and currently covers youth and education issues. So Ashley, will you give our guests and candidates kind of the rules of the road? And we'll get started.
All right, sounds good. Thank you so much, Becky. So just a quick rundown of our rules. Folks in the audience, please write your questions on the index cards and hold them up. And then Danielle, our Meg, will come and collect them. Bring them over here. Andrea and Ken are to be keeping time. When you have five seconds left, Andrea will do a countdown. And then when time's up, Ken will ring the bell. So, yes. Yep, we're going to be strict about that. Each candidate has two minutes for introductory remarks and then 90 seconds to respond to a question. And two minutes for closing statements. And, audience, please don't applaud, jeer, whatever. Just, you know, let's keep it civil and quiet. And afterwards, you can go up and talk to your candidates and tell them what you thought was good, what you didn't, whatever. But let's keep it all very civil. And we want all of the questions to be addressed to all of the candidates, so no questions pointed to individuals, please. All right, so we are going to get started. And I'm going to try to alternate who starts first, but we have one microphone here, I think. You're going to have to pass it down since Jeanette Bridge, it's right in front of you. So why don't you start with your opening statement? You have two minutes.
Testing.
Pretty nice, you go on.
Testing? Not yet. It's not. Someone's to the rescue.
Technical, technical, technical.
Testing. Yep, go ahead. Hello, I'm going to tell you a little bit about my background and also why I'm running. I have been a substitute teacher in the Highline District for over two years. And then later, a school bus driver for this district for over four years. I served on the Des Moines City Council from 2011 to 2015. To go back further, I grew up in Bureon and graduated from Highline High School. I earned a degree in business administration with a major in accounting from the University of Washington. I worked as an accountant and budget analyst for over 10 years. I have two reasons I'm going to tell you about at this point, since I only have two minutes, why I'm running for the school district board. First of all, our transportation department is underfunded, and as a result, there are not enough bus drivers. The district takes people out of the transportation office to drive school buses because there aren't enough drivers. You can imagine the stress of that on the existing drivers and the people in the office. And then that doesn't leave enough in the office for what they're supposed to do. And this has been going on for years. It's not a safe condition for the staff or the students. So we need to correct this as soon as possible. Another reason that I'm running is that the district plans to cut down on instruction time in courses in the high schools. The plan is to lengthen the time in each class day, but instead of taking the class for half a year, they would only take the course for a third of the year. And this is less class time total. The students will not likely be able to learn all the skills they need for each class. And this will mean a lot of, not enough time in Algebra I will be compounded by insufficient time in Algebra II. And then they may not be ready for the college classes.
All right. Thank you so much. You, Professor.
Good evening. My name is Faisa Bradford. Thank you all for being here. A little bit about myself. I am, first and foremost, a parent. I graduated a student in 2016 from Mount Rainier High School. My husband and I have lived in Des Moines since 2003. I've worked for Highline Public Schools not once, but twice. I transitioned as an educator in 2014 after coming from the private sector. I've worked in human resources and all sorts, all areas of operations, community and family engagement, all with an emphasis and a lens on equity and specific to racial equity. I was appointed to the school board and by my fellow school board members in February 2018 through a pretty competitive process. Reasons why I am running for school board and things that are very important to me, areas of focus that I believe there. The school district is complex, right? There's no shortage of complexities within the school district, and it's very much aligned with the complexities in our communities. And so what we see in the communities is very indicative of what we see in our communities. But high areas of belief for me are that all students should graduate with high expectations, right? They should graduate so that they meet the accomplishments and goals that their families have for them. I believe in elevating the voices of families and communities, and they should be very much a part of the decision-making process. I believe in holding the district accountable where our dollars are spent, where our resources are allocated, and where our staffing is. And then I also believe in spending taxpayer dollars wisely. Thank you again. I'm Faisa Bradford.
And I'm Bernie Dorsey. And I've been on the school board since 2007. I'm now running unopposed for my fourth term. And the reason I'm doing that is because I still have a great passion for the work. And I think that that's the most vital part of being a school board member is not having all the answers, because none of us do, but do we still have passion for the work? And I do. And I wanted to participate tonight because I respect the process. I respect the League of Women Voters. And I think it's important that the community understand that I still have that passion. That being said, there's been a tremendous change in our district over the last 12 years. And I want to continue to be a part of that change. And I think that we need to stay nimble, we need to stay focused, and we need to continue to do the best that we can for our community as a product of the Highline School District. My wife's a product of the Highline School, our son, my family, you get the picture. We are rooted deeply in the Highline School Districts and in the area. And it's why I continue to get up every morning and have passion for this work. So I really appreciate the opportunity to participate. I'm happy to engage in the questions, but to be quite frank, I don't want to detract away from the actual decisions that need to be made here tonight or need to be made between now and Election Day, but I'm more than happy to do whatever is in service of the League of Women Voters and the people in the room. Thank you. First, I'd like to start off by recognizing that we are in co-sellish land and that they are the stewards, they will continue to be the stewards of this land since time immemorial. My name is Alan Garcia. You can call me Aaron, you can call me A-Aaron, you can call me whatever you want, really. But I am a product of Highline Public Schools. I went to Shorewood Elementary School, Cascade Middle School, and Evergreen High School. I was the first of three siblings to go off to college and graduate with my bachelor's degree. And I returned back to my community in White Center to serve. I worked at Evergreen High School as a college access provider for over six years, hoping first-gen homecoming students get into higher end and careers of their choice. And then, of the last two years, I've been working for the White Center Community Development Association, where I've been focused on community building, affordable housing, and family development. At the end of the day, one of the things that really drives me to do this kind of work is because I'm a product of this community and somebody did it for me. I had educators, I have mentors and people who looked out for me and gave for me to be able to be the first in my family to get out of poverty and to be successful. And I just really want to give back to my community. That's why I've been doing it for the last 10 years, and I'm going to continue to do it regardless of what's going on. So I'm looking forward to talking a little bit more, and that's it.
I like the A-A. A, right. That's a key in the field, good.
So my name's Tracy Castro-Gill. I currently work for Seattle Public Schools as the Ethnic Studies Program Manager. Prior to that, I taught sixth grade social studies at Denny International Middle School. And then prior to that, I taught seventh grade in Federal Way. I come here from Southern California. I grew up in a mixed-race family as a mixed-race woman. And so racial equity is also very important to me. And I've actually worked with Faisa on that in Seattle Public Schools. And that's why I became an educator, because I didn't feel like my experience was represented in what I learned in the classroom. And I purposefully sought out a diverse school. Denny Middle School is the most diverse middle school in Seattle Public Schools, because that was my goal. I'm currently working on a Doctorate of Philosophy in Education with emphasis on curriculum assessment and instruction, because I feel like that's one area racial justice is ignored. And that's why Ethnic Studies is important to me. I'm also the first person in my family to go to college, so I think, I think it's really cool that I'm the first person to go, and I'm going all the way till the end. My goals are all around racial justice. And a lot of people think that that's something that's a side project or additive, but I feel like when we're focusing on racial justice, we are addressing all inequities, whether it be poverty, whether it be sexism, homophobia, transphobia. When we center racial justice, we are centering the needs of every person regardless of their intersecting identities or because of their intersecting identities. And so what I bring to the table is years of experience in education, years of understanding and working within the system, understanding that a budget is a reflection of your priorities, which is something I'm struggling with in Seattle Public Schools. And so all of those things are connected to my work with racial justice.
Thank you so much for those opening statements. Let me just ask all of you to hold the mic pretty close to your mouths so that people will be able to hear, because it is a little hard, I think, to hear. And also for the recording, V-Town Blog is doing. And I forgot to say one more thing. There's a whiteboard at the back there where when you guys, when the audience is, when it's all over, as the audience walks out, please do a little checkmark about how, whether the forum helped to make you a more informed voter or not. This is something that the League and the other sponsors would like to know, whether this kind of helped in your decision-making or not. Okay, so we're going to start off with our first question. And I think, since Tracy has a mic, you can be the first one and then just pass it down this way. What issue is the most urgent facing the school district this next year?
Racial justice. Racial justice is the most urgent issue. I mean, Highline Public Schools has such a high percentage of students of color, especially Latinx students. And what we know nationally is that those schools receive the fewest amount of resources. There was just a study that came out that talked about white schools, not our schools that are predominantly white students, having more resources, having more enrichment programs, more opportunities like advanced learning. And so that is the number one priority. When we address racial justice and working with the city council to address racial justice, because it's also in the community, as Faisa was saying, right? So we have to understand how to meet the needs of our students that are historically and currently least served in schools, because those communities are also least served in their communities. And so I feel like education is a good place to start, and school is the best place to address those needs, because we are empowering the future generation to go out and create an environment in which we don't have to fight for that anymore. It's just something that is there because it's in the values and beliefs of those students that we've taught in our schools.
All right. The most, there's so many. But I'll dittle racial justice, but I also want to focus on with the lens of family and community inclusion. So one of the things that I keep on bringing up throughout this campaign is if we want to build these starter schools, we have to make sure that we are including all parts of our community and our families in the work that we're doing. And not just going after the low-hanging fruit of the families who engage, the families who know how to speak English, the families that know how to navigate the system, but all of the families that represent the diverse community that we are. And I use a very lighthearted comment or an example of this, but something that I would expect of all the educators in our system is that they learn how to make friends with people who are different than them. If you grew up your whole life with other white folks, and that is your social circle, and you never learned how to speak a different language, you never learned how to connect with a person from a different race, then how am I, how are you going to really connect with a parent or a guardian who is different than you, right? So I'm going to simplify this very simply and say, I'm expecting the educators and the workers of Highline Public Schools to learn how to make friends with different people, because it's not that hard. We've been doing it since kindergarten. And then bringing them into the fold. Our parents, our educators, our students' first teachers, and they know how to serve our students, right? And that's what I'd say. Do you want me to respond?
Yeah, could you? I think it'd be good to hear.
Yeah, no, I'd be happy to. I agree with both of those. I think it's also equally important that we recognize the historical piece. And the historical piece is that this, we have focused on this work, and we continue to focus on this work. And we don't ever see this as work being done. And, but I have to say that I'm very proud of how far we are at this point. Not saying that, as I mentioned, we will ever be done, but it has been a focus, and it will continue to be a focus, because our district is changing. And frankly, it's the right thing to do. And I want our children to learn that. And I think that it's, it's something that, in defense of our educators, I have to say, I think that's a lens that they're, if they're not already using it, they're being encouraged to use it. And so I am proud of the work that we have done to this point, but I firmly recognize that we have a long ways to go. So that's my answer.
Would you repeat the question? Sure. It was, what's the issue that's the most urgent that's facing the school district for the next year?
Thank you. Again, it's very hard to pinpoint one issue. And so one of the things that I will say is sufficiency. And I've seen schools open and close due to insufficiency. And so for me, it feels like making certain that we have sufficiency in all areas, making certain that we have resources in every area, making certain that students have what they need, making certain that the leaders have what they need, making certain that the teachers, the leaders in the classrooms, and the, and the, all educators, and all, all work groups have what they need. And so it really becomes this issue around how are we allocating funds? How are we making certain that we are allocating equitably? And so it's really sufficiency and equity, right? And so they're, they're hand in hand. And so really making certain that if we're looking at where is the greatest need? Where does that greatest need exist? And how do we make certain that we're allocating the resources towards that? And that can be sufficiency even in tenure amongst the educators, right? Where is the greatest need, and where's the greatest need of tenure and experience need to be in our schools? And then making certain that we are crystallizing our equity policy so that it is actionized to get to this. Thank you.
Jeanette for AGN. I'd say one of the most important things is getting the families and the community involved in the education of their children. But I want to talk about the dire need we have to fix our transportation department. It's been going on for years, and our drivers are kind of treated like second-class citizens. The bus drivers make less money with their commercial driver's license than other places. They could go to Metro or a lot of different places with their commercial driver's license. And they make a lot less money here. If there was a shortage of teachers, I'm sure they would realize they need to raise the teacher pay. And there's a shortage of bus drivers, and they really need to raise the pay. The working conditions for the bus drivers also are not right. For example, the building that they work out of is so old and so decrepit and poorly made that when two people pass in the hallway, they have to turn sideways to get through. So our drivers are not valued, and they need to be for them and also for the children that they're transporting.
All right, thank you so much. So the next question, and we'll start with Aaron, so if you could just pass that down to him. And this question comes from somebody who wrote that they're an ex-district employee. And the question is, what will you do to stem the flow of staff leaving rather than staying?
At the end of the day, the school district is going to set the culture and the norm of the school district. That is one of our rules, right? Set the expectations and set, create the environment that makes people want to stay. And we already have educators. People don't enter into this workforce because they know they're going to get paid a lot of money. They do it because they have a passion and they love our children, right? And they get burnt out by a system that doesn't recognize that love, and it creates a very toxic environment where they feel like they can't speak up to the needs of the students. So we have to figure out how to take away the no's in our system and figure out how to get our educators the yeses to the needs that they need, so that all of our students can strive by name, strength, and meaning, or whatever the thing is, right? Because we don't give our educators all the tools and the pain that they deserve to be able to do this work. It is part of the reason why our, some of them don't want to be here. But it has nothing to do with the lack of pain. It has nothing to do, it's really the culture that we are setting. And, and we have to be at the forefront of trying to change that environment. And educators should feel comfortable and competent enough to be able to step into any environment and say that they don't like something and not feel that there's going to be repercut, whatever the word is. But that they feel safe. And that's not always the environment. So I want to make sure that we are aware of it and transparent of it and facing it head-on. It's a reality. So, thank you.
That's good. Thank you.
So one of the things we talk a lot about in the school district is data-driven decision-making. And just recently, we actually had a board retreat. And in that board retreat, we looked at these very numbers. And I think that there's always the perception versus the reality. And the data frankly just doesn't support that teachers are leaving in flocks and droves out of the Highline School District. If anything, I would argue that we have multiple hires who are coming and wanting to work at Highline School District. And we've seen the numbers. And those numbers don't represent, or they don't substantiate the narrative. Now, we can always do better. And there's nothing that we are unwilling to try. There are things that we are unable to try, but the willingness is there. And I think that's a critical piece, too, is this is such a complex job, and we've always got to be balancing, right? And what we want to do and what we can do are always oftentimes opposed. But one of the things that I'm proud of is that we have focused intensely on creating an education workforce from administrators on down that represents the students that they serve. And we'll continue to do that. But I have to say that the data doesn't substantiate this idea that people are leaving in flocks and droves, including our educators of color. And so I think that's, that's an important piece also, that we value our educators and we want to do everything we can to maintain their excellence. So, thank you.
All right, well, I think most people know me. This is, this is a soapbox that I can stay on, because I am very much about retention and the experiences that people have. And so even, you know, as my colleague Bernie, you know, even speaks to the, what the data says, I am, I am uberly focused on what the experiences are. And I, I know that, especially working in HR, in the workforce planning team, there's a lot of work that goes into recruitment and onboarding and the acquisition cost to bringing on new staff. And it's, it is imperative that we make certain that we are keeping staff, right? If we're bringing them on, we said that then we need to make certain that we're doing all that we can to, to keep them. And so I believe that we need to do iterative surveys, not just exit surveys, those are post-mortem. We need to understand the experiences that folks are having. We don't need to do the autopsy, right? But we need to actually make certain that we're diagnosing what's happening in, in the midst of the, of the experiences that folks are having. And so I'm very concerned when folks leave. And so, and I'm very concerned about the experiences that people are having. And so I think that we need to look, look at where people are leaving, who's leaving, and why they're leaving.
That sounds like a great idea to me. I think what I've heard is that some of the teachers are leaving because of discipline problems in the schools. And I know the schools recently went to a no-suspension policy, which in a way is good, because kids don't learn if they're suspended from school. But then there's also the opposite end of that, is if there's not negative consequences for bad acts, then they're going to keep doing bad things. So I think we really need to look into the discipline system and make sure that this new system they have has enough backup through counselors, training for teachers on how to deal with children if you're not going to suspend them.
The bad part about going last is I want to respond, but. So this is something that I'm, this is part of my dissertation, especially as it pertains to recruiting and retaining educators of color. And one thing that I am learning is the, the environment of toxic testing is pushing out good educators, because we are not given the respect of professionals who are trained in pedagogical practices. And so we're expected to teach to tests, which then kind of is the result of students misbehaving or acting out because they're bored out of their mind from doing worksheets to practice for the test. And then so instead of encouraging our teachers or supporting our teachers to teach in a more culturally responsive way, we're taught to be disciplinarians. And that's no fun either. Like, like Aron said, we're there because we love the students, not because we want to discipline them. But we're being forced into that environment. Another thing we know, especially with, well, with all educators, is there's not enough leadership opportunities for educators. We're often seen as incompetent. We're seen as not capable of being part of district-level decision-making, policies, all of those things that we're left out of that impact us as educators. And for educators of color, there's also micromanagement. And we know that educators of color are disciplined disproportionately, too.
Okay, Bernie, I'll start with this one. Thank you. So, Highline School District has a strong equity policy. Many in the Highline School District system, students and staff are not experiencing authentic equity. As a board member, how will you address this?
Good question, thank you. I have to say, one of the, as I reflect back on I have to say, one of the, as I reflect back on my time on the school board at some point in the future, one of the things that I'll be most proud of is that I was on the board when our district developed our initial equity policy, led by Cici Sabusa, a previous District One board member. And we continue to evolve and grow and learn. And as we do so, that's always a living document. And so that equity policy is paramount in guiding as much as humanly possible everything we do, including our most recent improvement, refinement, and that's the equity tool. And that is something that we're now implementing district-wide. And I mean, we all know that, you know, we want to do the best we can, but as I said earlier, the data is what really proves the point. And so without that tool and using that as the lens with which we operate, it becomes difficult to actually see what I think we're doing well, maybe we're not doing well. And if that's true, then I really want to know as a board member. We have a saying called, "We want to know warts and all. Don't tell us what we want to hear, tell us what we need to know." And I think that's an important part of school boardsmanship.
I have to ask that a question. It's basically that there's a strong equity policy, but that students and staff are not experiencing authentic equity. So how would you address that?
Yeah, I think that there's always, there can always be, you know, some dissonance between what's said and what is really being actualized. And so one of the things that I do think needs to happen is we need to definitely give teeth to the equity policy, right? It has to, it has to be actionized. We have to, we have to get stronger around it. It has some strong language and again, as Bernie was saying, you know, it's gone through certain iterations of language and, and it just has to get stronger. And I think that it gets stronger by inviting the very voices that are experiencing the marginalization and the inequities. I don't know that we are doing such a great job in really engaging those voices. And so in the absence of that, we will continue to have perception, we'll continue to create and develop things that we're not close enough to the folk, to the people that are really experiencing those. So I think, and I speak as being a former employee who experienced, I experienced the inequities, that the, basically the strategic planner, that the policies didn't necessarily line up with what I was experiencing. So I think that we've got to get the voices to the table.
Yes, I think it's important that the board is given information on which to act to improve things. Sounds like whoever wrote the question has some information about things that are happening that the board may probably not be aware of. One of the things that comes to mind when talking about equity is respect. I think respect for everyone is important. And there was an example recently of an administrator in the Highline District who was asked to stop these students from going to a convention that they had been planning on going to all year so they could compete in some kind of debate thing. And someone from the state wrote him a letter and so like three weeks before they were supposed to go, the administrator said, "No, they can't go." And he didn't even talk to the teachers in charge. So I think there's, there is a respect problem in some instances that we need to work on.
Strong equity policy, not, people are not seeing authentic equity. What would you do?
Equity policies and racial equity or equity tools are only as good as the people using them. So if the people using them don't have a strong sense of what we call equity literacy or understanding what equity is and why it's important to act in equitable ways, we're just going to perpetuate the same inequities over and over again. So we need to start with some professional development from the top down. Oftentimes, we go straight to the teachers with that professional development. It should start with the board members. It should start with the superintendent and the small cabinet. Nobody is exempt from having to learn these concepts and understand how to use these tools that we're creating. And the other thing I want to push back on is data-driven decision-making. First of all, who's creating the data? What questions are being asked? If we're not asking the right questions, we're not getting the right information. And so even the data decision, go back to what data is collecting. Who's collecting the data? Do they have that racial equity or equity? I keep going to racial equity because that's my thing. Do they have that equity literacy to even know what questions to ask? And then if the board isn't getting this information, it's not, having worked in school districts, it's not uncommon for the district officials and administrators to purposefully hide things from the board. So the board has to do a better job of demanding information from the school district administrators. They work for us, not the other way around. We have the same issue in Seattle.
One of my closest mentors reminded me, when we were talking about this, is that equity isn't that we all get the same, it's that we get what we need, what an individual needs to be successful and to thrive. So taking a step way, way back and talking about this problem from the source is that we are seeing how scarcity plays out. We are seeing what happens when we aren't getting enough funding from our state to really fulfill the needs of our school, of our students. And it's playing out like we're seeing it here live in person. So what needs to happen on our end, because that's not going to change overnight, that's something that we're going to have to work together to advocate for and to change. But what has to happen is that as a board member, we have to prioritize what we can do with the funds that we have. And if we all believe, we're all saying that we believe that racial equity should be a focus, then we also need to start allocating enough resources and money to address that issue. We need to look at the schools where the students have the most needs and say, "Hey, we have to put the money where the need has to be to be able to see the results." And until we start doing that and stop living with this world that everybody gets the same and it should all be the same, until we start doing that, it's not going to happen. We're not going to see the results that we keep on demanding from our system. So, yeah.
All right. So Faisal will answer the, yeah. So the question is, are you familiar with the King County Arts Education Dashboard, which using data from OSPI indicates that at the high school level, Highline School District students are least likely to have access to arts education, which is a state requirement compared to all the other school districts in King County? What would you do to change that?
It's not a short question. With all transparency, no, I'm not familiar. So I think the first thing that I would need to do to change that is educate myself around what it is that OSPI is saying and then making, comparing that to what it is that we're doing and seeing where, if there are any gaps between what the requirement, the mandate is, and then what it is that we're doing. And then if we're, if we do find that there are gaps, then making certain that we identify what the need is going to be to fill those gaps. So certainly that one, we're in compliance with the mandate and then that we are making certain that we're serving students well.
I'm also not familiar with that particular situation, but I do think that we need to have arts in the Highline District such as music and art and that this trimester thing that they're planning on changing to is actually detrimental to having a full year of music or a full year of art for the high school students. So that's another reason why I don't think we should have that.
Thank you. So I'm not familiar with the dashboard, but I do know, again, going back to toxic testing culture, is that the first thing to go in service of testing is the arts and then the humanities and then physical education. And so I think that if we de-emphasize standardized testing, we can bring back the arts. I know testing is a federal mandate and we can't 100% get rid of it on this level, but we can remove it from priorities, like we can just go put it in the corner. And then we can focus on the little human beings that are in front of us and help them become fulfilled, actualized human beings, which art is essential to. And I want to challenge this idea that art has to be a standalone course too. We can integrate it into different disciplines. I just came from a meeting where a teacher taught STEAM, and that's where you bring art into science, math and tech and engineering, science, technology, engineering and math, right? And you bring art into it. The work I do for ethnic studies brings art into every single classroom. So we just did a project this past year where we brought theater arts into social studies and English language arts classrooms using, it's called Augusto Bual's Theater of the Oppressed. And so art belongs everywhere. Art is integral to human beings and culture, and it's sad that we put testing first.
I just looked at the, we're looked up the dashboard right now. I, well, let me start off by saying as a former first, or second chair, it wasn't ever first chair, Clarinet, as part of the Evergreen Chamber of Wings, I 100%, 100% agree that we need to figure out how to find more resources and support for arts. So one of the issues that I drum over and over and over again is healthy and creative students. We know right now that we are seeing the highest amount of the need to have mental health support for our youth. We are seeing our students being disengaged because of the thing that I just used to try to find the dashboard. And to answer your question though, the thing that we need again is dedicated resources. So one of the ideas that I've heard and I've often flood, and I don't like to promote too often, but whatever, I'm going to do it because that's what you do, is that I think we have to have a dedicated levy that is dedicated to the arts and health so that whenever we start to lose funding from this end, we have a dedicated funding source that cannot be touched. And I know that this community would rally behind funding arts and health programming, sports. That is something that I know this community would love to do to support our youth, and we have to make sure that the system can't move that money away. So I think that's a strategy that we can do as a community to tell the system that this is a priority, that we want to see it happen, and that it can kind of get to this issue. So, thank you.
So until Aron cheated, I was going to make an unanimous that I'm unfamiliar with this dashboard also, but I will look it up because one of the things I've learned about this job is that as much as I try and oftentimes feel bad about, I can't know everything. But I can tell you this, in 2007, '08, '09, and '10, our district faced the budget crisis that almost every school district faced in our region. And, but we never cut the arts. We didn't fully fund it. And in one case, it was just a line item with no funding, but we didn't cut it. And the reason I think that's relevant is because it's a priority. I oftentimes think of the experience of our students and the thing that I think about is what gets them to school? What's that hook? What's that one thing that they're really passionate about? And I think we all know and can acknowledge that for many of our students, that can be the art. It could be choir, it could be band, it could be art. And I think our role is to try to find the balance and making sure that the students that need and desire and are motivated by that enrichment have access to it. Does that mean we can provide it year-round? Maybe not. But does that mean that we can provide it before or after school? Possibly. The important part is that we're exploring the interest and we're acknowledging that what our students are interested in, we're obliged to try to make that happen if at all possible.
Thank you. Okay, here's the next question, and I will start. What are your positions on the use of public funds for charter schools and the accountability of charter schools' performance?
Well, I believe that competition is a good thing and it brings out excellence. And I think that charter schools are something that will help create competition and create some other methods of doing things that we can learn from. So I think it's good to fund charter schools. They do need to be held accountable, but that doesn't mean that they need to be just like all the other public schools. That's not what accountability means to me. So I think it's good that we would keep them accountable to, that the students are learning what they need to learn, but it doesn't have to be in the same way that they're learning it in the public schools.
Charter schools need to go. We should not be using public funds for charter schools. We have lots of data and evidence to tell us that they mismanage funds, that they are more harmful to students of color than public schools. They cherry pick students. When the charter school opened up down the street from Denny International Middle School in October, after we had our enrollment counts, which we do, like our FTE, our Full-Time Position Funding, based on student numbers. So by the time we had those numbers in in October, they would kick special ed students especially out, or students who were seen with behavioral problems. And then those kids would come back to our school and have to be integrated, you know, in the middle of the first semester. And so I am totally 100% against public funds going to charter schools for all those reasons, with the caveat that until we do better by students of color in our public school systems, we cannot fault families of color for going and looking for alternatives. So if we want to win the fight against charter schools, we have to make racial justice a priority and we have to meet the needs of students of color so families of color don't justifiably leave public schools.
Man, ditto. That was a great answer. What I would say too, and just to add to this, is going back to that bigger picture, this, what is happening is we're creating scarcity. So instead of getting the resources to our highest need schools, they're moving away. And we're not just seeing this with charter schools. We're seeing it whenever a student decides to go to Run and Start. We're seeing it whenever a family decides to go on a ferry and go somewhere else. We're seeing it when they decide to go to other schools within our own district. We're seeing the scarcity happen. We saw it play out when we saw Evergreen Campus turn into three small schools. We saw a perfect example of what competition does, and it creates one really, really successful school and some schools that need improvement, right? Like, so at the end of the day, the problem is that we're not funding education to the levels that we need to be at this level. And we're seeing our students be treated like guinea pigs at this level. And we need to stop doing that. So at the end of the day, we have to disrupt that system and make sure that we're not treating our kids like guinea pigs and chasing funding sources that aren't unsustainable. And making sure that we're aware that we are, what's the whole saying? We're stealing for Paul to pay for Peter, vice versa. Whenever we talk about charter schools, whenever we talk about Run and Start, whenever we talk about private schools, we are taking the resources that we need to help the most needed schools.
So this is, obviously this is an issue kind of fraught with peril, but I think it's important to maybe share my philosophy around this. And my philosophy is this, charter schools exist because families want options. Do I support them personally? No. I'm a public school guy, right? I don't want anything that's going to detract away from our ability and our resources to meet the needs of public school students. What I am challenged by is what makes that attractive? Because to me, therein lies the answer. If a family's choice is to put their student into a school, then the first thing that I'm going to say is, what is so compelling about that environment and how do we replicate or improve on that within our own structure, our public school system? So as I said, it's a really tough issue, but for me, it's, I think it's important for those of us in public schools to say, what is it that is appealing to families and causing them to want to make that choice? And when we can take that, when we can take, not take the choice away from them, but we, when we can compete with them, as Jeanette said, and provide an environment that's competitive to or better than the choice they're making, now I think charter schools become a moot point.
I will say that I am an absolute proponent and product of family choice. And so to that end, I would say, I certainly want to make the clarification that charter schools in this state are public schools. So there's the traditional public schools and there's the charter public schools. I am also a proponent of excellence in education. And so as one that has gone through private school, alternative school, and traditional public school, I appreciate the fact that I had choice as well as sending my children my, my children, uh, having that, those choices as well. Um, I do think that we need to make certain, again, the accountability is key. I don't care if we're, uh, at, down the street at Midway or wherever, uh, or at a char, a charter public school. We need to make certain that the accountability is there, the, uh, expectation, the demand for excellence is there, the, uh, equity is there, that, I don't care what type of school it is, uh, students need to get what they need in order to thrive and be successful. And I think it's also, we have to look at what, uh, the entitlement, if we think it's our, uh, one person's money, we've gotta make certain that again, we understand the money is to be shared.
Um, thank you. So the next question is, um, yeah, uh, Tracy will start with this one. Um, the district's mission is to know students by name, strength, and need. At school board meetings, this person has witnessed board members silence students and families. How will you work to center student, family, and educator voice?
So people have witnessed the school board or?
It says, yeah, board members. I don't know the instance of this, but.
Um, yeah, I think I would have to know a little bit more context to answer this question, but I can speak to my own experiences in seeing students be silenced because they're angry, um, and then they're told to act with civility or be polite or be nice, um, which is often used against people of color in general. And so I think that as school board directors, as elected officials, it's our job to sit in that discomfort and listen when people are angry and try to understand why they're angry. And if we're shutting them down or not allowing them to speak, that's a hundred percent about our own comfort and that's not what we're here for. So I would encourage any elected official to, to be able to sit and listen to that discomfort. Um, in the work that I do, I have to do that all the time. And I consider myself an expert on racial equity and I still don't know everything that I should know. And I get called out sometimes and I get called out angrily. And I have to say, you're right, I hear you, I, I understand you, well, how can we make it better? And so that's what we need to do for students and family members in our district.
Um, so family and community inclusion, I said that earlier and I'm gonna bring it back against, something that I would want to disrupt is this idea of family engagement. That's like the buzzword. Um, and I guess I'll make another buzzword, but really focus it around family inclusion and it, and changing the dynamic, right? Right now, we take the, oh, we sent a pamphlet, we sent you an email, we sent you a, 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 a robocall, you have been engaged, but that does not actually mean included, right? So my philosophy is that everything should be centered around the student experience and it, and it should include our families in the process. Uh, so I've been actually a proponent of figuring out, how can we actually get student voice on the board? Um, I know that sounds like a radical idea to some folks, but at the end of the day, we're doing the work for them and they're not, they don't have a seat at the table? Like, that doesn't, that doesn't add up. So I'm gonna make sure that whenever I'm having to, uh, making decisions, that I'm working with students, uh, and families and educators to make sure that I am, uh, grounding myself in those voices, cause oftentimes that doesn't happen. We also just have to find different ways to engage with our communities. One of the complex issues about Highland Public Schools is that we have ninety-five different languages, right? And we have people who have different access to technology. We have people who have different access to understanding of the language. We have, it is complex. No excuse, we have a ton of staff and employees and people. We need to get out there, we need to build those relationships so that those families feel included, cause when we reach that point at the board meeting, it's too late. We failed, we have to recognize that.
So I would, I would be very interested if there was a specific incident that, that, that the person who provided the question has in mind. I will, I will say this. Uh, procedurally, at a school board meeting, there is a public comment period and it's in policy. That is a public comment, it's not a dialogue between the board and whoever the commenter may be, whether it's a student, a teacher, a parent, a community member. The board listens and I, I truly believe you govern with your ears, not with your mouth. And so it's an important part of what we do. It's not always easy. Uh, I don't, I, I'd say about fifty percent of the people, it's maybe sixty percent of the people that show up and speak at board meetings are unhappy about something, but it's something that we need to know about. I can only think in twelve years of one instance where I may have given someone the impression that I was shutting a commenter down. The, the correct, uh, my correct recall of that incident was we were having a debate on the dais about how much time to extend because there was translation needed. Because we do have ninety-five different dialects in our, in our district. We do translate the majority of our materials to our most prominent languages. We do have interpreters available at every public meeting where they are required or even where they may not be, but could be beneficial. So I think it's really important to acknowledge that we're adapting and growing, but we're always learning. So, thank you.
Um, one of the things that, uh, really energizes me is when we do have student voice. Um, one of the, uh, fa- favorite meetings that I've been at, uh, was where probably my second, uh, meeting, um, of being on the board. And it's where we had just a, a, a large gathering of student voice. And they were advocating for their needs in, um, in the ways that were authentic to them. And, uh, I had, you know, grown children now, but they were, I've had teenagers, so I have tough skin, so I, I don't care how you need to bring it, I need to hear it. And so, um, I, I think it's, uh, something I heard Tracy say, um, it's, it's being okay with being uncomfortable, being okay when folks aren't agreeable. Um, but finding what is the common thread across lines of difference and being able to find opportunity there. And so, um, I welcome, uh, student voice, I welcome, uh, community voice, uh, be it internal, external. Um, one of the things that I haven't done well in this term, because I've been so busy learning, um, is I want to, uh, have, uh, community forums, uh, where I get to hear, because the dais shouldn't be the only place that I depend upon, uh, families and our community to come share with me. And so I, um, am committed to, uh, hosting community forums. I don't know what that looks like, I know that's on TV and stuff, so I gotta be accountable. Um, but having community forums, thank you.
And the question was? It was about, um, the district's mission is to know students by, yeah, name, strength, and need. How do you center student and family voice?
Um, I think it's important that we do, uh, on the board, listen to, uh, what people have to say when they come. But I think it's also important that, uh, ahead of time, we let people know when it's appropriate for them to come and, um, if they've been working with the administration, um, that's what they're supposed to do in the first place. And how do you tell when you, you get to your end of your rope with administration and you need to come to the school board? Um, so perhaps some information and dialogue, um, with the community members, parents, and even students on, um, how the school board works and how we accept and get the, the input from them. It might be good too, if they were encouraged to, um, write letters. Uh, I used to be on the city council and every once in a while, we'd get a letter, even though, you know, we, it was, um, pretty obvious to us that anybody could write us a letter, but they hardly ever did. So I think it should be encouraged and, um, the, people should be given the skills to understand the, how they can communicate with the board.
All right, this next question's gonna be for Erin and it's kind of picking up off of what Faiza said. Um, uh, this is me talking and then this is the question from somebody who wrote, um, Seattle's school board members do hold, um, community meetings, uh, to hear from parents and community members, um, often on the weekends. So how often do you, I don't know if that's done here, but, um, how often do you think that board members should have widely announced public meetings with parents and the public?
See, that's not a fair question because I am so, so involved in the work that I do and immersed in White Center and it's my life. And Evergreen High School is the school, my, it's my alma mater, I love it to death. Um, it's part of the district that I'm running for. Um, so for me, it's gotta be every single day that we're in the community and we're engaged with families and we're engaged with parents. I, I, I know that that's not what other folks can do, they don't have the luxury of working in a nonprofit in the community. Um, but you have to, or else how else are you gonna hear about what's going on? How else are you gonna get a pulse of the culture of how teachers and educators and students are feeling? Um, but that is the benefit that I think I have by doing the work that I do and having the history that I have, not just as a product of Highland Public Schools, but my commitment to this community. Um, so I think the answer should be always. Um, what I would be committed to doing though is having homework sessions where we go over the board packets, not just with me, but it's open to anybody to come. So that I can review, ask questions, invite anybody, educators, students, parents, to review the packet with me, let's read it together, let's go over it together, let's ask questions, let's do our priorities of what this is, and let's take it to the board meeting as a community. That's something I'm committed to doing. I was gonna do that anyway. Not everybody has the same kind of time that I do and, and level of passion for White Center that I do. Um, sorry, that's it.
So this, this is a great idea and, uh, we actually tried this for two years and, uh, the attendance was so poor that frankly, uh, it was a little discouraging. It was discouraging to us as board members because we scheduled and we put out notices that we were having community meetings and then we would get maybe a handful of people. And although that time was valuable in the sense that we had an opportunity to learn and listen, um, it was disappointing in the sense that we heard and we heard from the perspective of those four or five people and it's the broader perspective that we need. So I'm a fan of community meetings, I'm, I'm more than happy and open to continue to or do those again or reinstitute them. Um, but I'm, I'm gonna circle back to the governing with your ears and not your mouth. And in my mind, community meeting happens everywhere. It happens, heck, I go to the grocery store and I come back forty-five minutes later and my wife knows that I've been talking to, about schools. And so I think that those are important conversations also. So be it organized and notified, uh, that we're available, I think that's a wonderful idea. And I'm fully willing to participate in that and anxious. Uh, but I also think that it's the everyday interactions, as Aron mentioned, that it's being in the community, it's listening and learning and watching and really listening to our students also. And I, I wanna say one quick thing about student voice, but I'm gonna reserve it for hopefully another opportunity.
This is for everyone?
I don't wanna get dinged.
It's close, it's close.
No, this question's for everybody. So it's about how often do you, how, how often do you think board members should have widely announced public meetings with parents and the public?
Yeah, I, I, right now don't know what the cadence should be. Um, I think as often as, as necessary. I mean, I think I could, um, you know, just kind of throw out, you know, perhaps, uh, you know, once a quarter, once a month. Uh, but again, I think it would really, uh, the, the, the attendance would dictate that. Um, I've seen, uh, elected officials have, uh, coffee hours where they just go and, you know, post up and have, uh, open hours, uh, at a coffee shop. Again, I don't know the exact cadence, uh, but I would be willing to, uh, really engage, uh, the community more broadly to understand where that needs to happen. Again, I don't wanna assume that, you know, folks are going to all come to where I think it's, uh, they, they should come to, but how can I also get to where they are? So if that's at, you know, apartment complexes or, um, uh, the community centers, wherever that is, um, but I, I think that, that, that the cadence would need to be determined.
I'm also not sure how many times in a year they, we should have community meetings, but it sounds like a good idea. I think one of the things we need to do is work on being involved with the community and the parents, um, directly at the school level. Um, and that would then feed into having more people aware of what's going on and want to come to, uh, an open forum. So, um, I think we need to work on, uh, like in, um, this, uh, Des Moines Elementary. Excuse me. They have, um, been doing really well in getting the parents involved in their students' education. And so I think we need to take what they've been doing and apply that to some of the other schools, um, and learn from their good experiences. And then I think it'll be more likely that people would be, want to come to a forum. But I do think an open forum is a good idea because the school board meetings are pretty rigid and there's no, uh, give and take or passing information. Um, so I think a forum would be a great idea.
Thanks. Um, I think once a month is a reasonable expectation for a school board director to meet with community, but I think also, uh, a director, a good, smart director would be responsive. So if there's some pressing, um, decision that needs to be made, you might have to schedule an impromptu, um, session with people. And, you know, I, I enjoy my own company, so if I put up a meeting and nobody shows up, you know, I'll read a good book or do some homework or something and then if somebody drops in, then we can have a conversation, right? And, um, to get people who aren't traditionally, uh, willing to come to those settings first, you have to build trust because, you know, there's historical distrust, um, particularly in communities of color with public education. And so one thing you can do, or one thing I would do, uh, is build relationships with community-based organizations that serve different racial and ethnic groups and partner with them to have these community meetings and have some of their membership come. And so like I have a good relationship with the King County NAACP, I have a good relationship with C Mar and both of those organizations serve our communities. I think it's also important, as Faiza said, to go to where the people are and we have such a huge service area geographically that we would need to make sure that our, um, meetings are in different regions. So I know, um, Ashley mentioned in Seattle, those school board directors tend to only have it in the districts that they serve in. And I always thought that that's kind of weird because you serve all the students, not just the students in your district.
Um, okay, so, um, Bernie, I think this one will go to you. Uh, we have heard a lot of the word equity used so far tonight, but one person said, how do you define equity?
That's, you know, it's a great question and I think a lot about it and I continue to think about it obviously, cause I don't have a ready answer. But I think that equity is about a system that meets the needs of every individual. But it's really critical that we know that individual. We know where they come from, we know what they look like, we know what their experiences are. It's one reason why our, our statement of knowing every student by name, strength, and need enables us to fulfill our promise of equity. And as I said, we, we have a long way to go and we will always have a long way to go. But I define equity as meeting the needs of every individual student to the very, very best of our ability. Knowing that, now, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna be at risk in this work of constantly feeling like I'm failing some student. I've, I've come to terms with the fact that that's just something I'm gonna have to deal with. And that's part of being a school board director also. It's that no matter how much your heart wants to serve and meet the needs of every individual student, uh, we can't always do it, but it can never prevent us from continuing to try. So that's how I define equity.
So I, I'm, certainly I think that, you know, I've been speaking about equity, I know someone, uh, uh, during the primary, uh, got accused of just, you know, kind of throwing out buzzwords and talking about equity, but, but truly, I, I'm, I'm, I'm talking, I'm talking about it because that's what I'm living. And so again, I think, uh, A, Aron, uh, gave a description earlier that I, that I agree with. Um, and it is, it's, it's making certain that folks have what they need. And so, and then allocating resources according to those needs. And, 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 uh, I agree, you know, knowing students by name, strength, and need, that's even an individual, um, of, 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 of need. And if we know that there are, that the greatest needs are in, uh, the, 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 the north end of the district, uh, then we know that. And so whether or not I know those students individually, I know that that is where the needs are. And again, I go back to, so where are the tenured teachers, right? Where are the tenured educators? Uh, where are the dollars going? And so making certain that when, even in, in our budgeting process, uh, that we're making certain that we're looking at what are the needs of our building, that it's aligned with our annual action plans? And then, uh, what are the needs of the students there and allocating our resources to that need?
I think equity is, um, making sure that, um, as many children as possible, we try for every child, um, has the opportunity, uh, to meet their, um, goals as a, in an adult and as a student. And I think part of that is that they're not all starting from the same place. Uh, each student, uh, is in a different place, a different family and has different background. And so to give them all the same opportunity, we need to look at what their needs are to get their... give their opportunity to the same level as everyone else.
I think when people say things like, we have to meet the needs of all the students, it sounds too much like equality. And that's, it's true, that's what equity aims to do, is meet the needs of all the students, but I think there's a lot of confusion because it gets mixed, jumbled up with equality. And so I want to give you the way I look at it. Equality focuses on the starting point. So you know that term, you know, equal or level playing field? That's equality. Equity focuses on the ending point. And so the playing field won't look equal because different students have different needs. So the beginning point is going to look very different, but the end goal is for everybody to have their needs met. Equity is responsive to students' needs. So what an LGBTQ student needs is going to be very different than what a cis hetero student needs. And it's not gonna look the same, and it's not always going to look fair either. And so I think another definition of equity is dismantling hierarchies and dismantling systems of oppression that unfairly benefit and privilege certain groups of people. And when we say that, that's going to put those certain groups of people on defense. And if we say that we are going to be a district that is acting equitably, we have to be prepared to stand up against those people who are fighting to maintain their privilege.
So I said it already, equity is about making sure that everybody's needs are met. And maybe I'm idealist, or maybe I'm like pie in the sky hopeful, but for thousands and thousands of years, the indigenous people of this land made sure that everybody in their tribes were getting their needs met. Way before, and we have this experiment of America for about two-hundred-and-forty, what, three years? So for thousands of years, the indigenous people of this land showed us, gave us proof that it can be done. It happened. We are building a beloved community. We are doing it right now. We have to believe that we can do it. And we have to set that expectation. So I think we can do it. I think if we push the system, we say that we're gonna get the resources that our students need, and we identify that need, we keep pushing it, that is our goal. That is what us, the electeds, are supposed to be doing. So that is what we're trying to do. Identify what are the highest needs, and then get the resources to that and solve the problem. So yeah.
Thank you. We should've had that question first before we tackle all those other equity questions. Okay, Highland District is planning on trimesters next year for high school. And this has come up a little bit, I think Jeanette brought it up. So students are supposed to learn thirty-six weeks of content in twenty-four weeks for almost all subjects. And some students are concerned they won't be adequately prepared for college if they take two trimesters instead of a full year of a course. And sometimes the trimesters may not be back-to-back. What's your thinking on the switch to trimesters? And we'll start with you, Faiza.
So trimesters are, from my understanding, going to offer longer blocks of time for students to receive specific content work. And so I, I've never been a part of trimester systems, and so I am yet also curious. And I do believe that the longer block periods will give us the opportunity to really work towards some mastery in different content areas. And so that is what I'm looking for. I'm looking for, how do we move the needle on our academics? And how do we move that needle? And what is the measure of the needle? And so again, I don't know that it's only standardized test, but what is the measure of that needle? And how are we ensuring that the, I talk about, sorry, I'm a little bit all over the place, but in this question, but my motivation for being on the school board is that my daughter graduated from high school with international baccalaureate designations on her transcript and was not admissible to a four-year college. So I need to make certain that students are learning the content in the time given.
As I said before, I don't think this is a good idea, although they're gonna get a little more time for a class each day because there's only gonna be five periods a day instead of six periods a day. But the whole course is shorter time length, and so if you calculate it out, less hours are gonna be spent in each course. And that's why I say it's gonna compound the problem as they go through high school in math or science, not having enough hours of instruction in whatever class it is. What they are hoping to gain, I believe, is you can get more credits that way in having the trimesters. You can get more credits so it looks like that you're making more progress, but actually it's not enough, it's not really fulfilling the course requirements that they need to do. And so I think we should stick with the six periods and the full time that you have in a semester to learn the course.
This is all very confusing to me. I don't know of any education system that does trimesters. And if we're getting students ready for college and beyond, you know, all colleges are on quarter or semester systems. And so it doesn't make sense to go, and the rationale that I heard from Faiza is confusing too, is block periods, because in Seattle Public Schools, we have quarters, and we do block periods in Seattle Public Schools, too. We just modified the schedule to meet the needs of the block scheduling. So I would, I need to learn more about it, to be honest. I need to understand it more, but it just, it's not making sense with how I understand education and how other models operate to serve the needs of students and offer more time for learning.
I'll also say, I definitely need to sit back and get, learn more. But I do know that one of the driving forces behind this is a state mandate. We are switching to twenty-four credits for graduation. And because of that, one way or another, we have to make some type of change or adjustment to the schedule. So that is one of the driving forces that is forcing us to do this because our state and us, our communities are holding our students to a higher standard. We wanna make sure that every student, whether they are trying to go to a university or not, have that opportunity. So this alignment of credits is making sure that every one of our students is college-bound. What they decide to do after they graduate, it's up to them. And it's up to our schools to make sure that they're ready for a career, they're ready to join the military, they're ready to go to college, if that's what they want. And what this type of new schedule does is it gives them more types of electeds and opportunities to explore those kind of options. Not just university options, but career options and personal options. So I don't know enough, I'm still gotta learn more. But I will say that this was a two-year process to try to figure out a solution. It was led by educators and parents in the process. And it's never gonna be perfect. What I would suggest is, can we be transparent about what kind of options we're giving our families if something doesn't line up? If a family says, hey, my kid needs an extra third quarter of math because we can't do the brain drain, let's get this kid in the math class.
So yeah, obviously, this is a, this is a complex issue. And as Aaron just mentioned, this came before the board two years ago, and we really didn't feel as though the depth of study was efficient to take staff's recommendation. So we sent them back out. Because as I learned from my colleague Faiza, urgently doesn't, or how did that go? Urgency doesn't mean urgently. And we've had several things. Sixth grade to middle school was another issue where we had to step back to make sure that we were doing every piece of homework that we needed to do. And so one of the things that I've learned about being a school board member is that I'm not an educator, right? I believe in education, but I'm representing the community to the schools and the schools to the community. What I think we should be doing isn't necessarily always what, you know, the experts are telling us. And I also agree with Tracy that we have to always have a healthy skepticism, that, you know, people will tell us what they want us to go along with. And so we do need to push back, we do need to challenge. And one of my earlier statements, I said, I mentioned being nimble. And I think here's a perfect example. We've studied, we've taken the time. At some point, again, as Aron mentioned, you've just gotta go forward. And so I'm anxious to see how this will turn out. I truly believe that it will serve our students well, and to me, that's the most important thing.
Right, yeah, no, you go to.
You did go, right?
Yes.
You started.
Yeah. No, I was interacting. Okay. So here's another question. How much time should students be on digital devices during the school day?
Go ahead, Jeanette, start with me. Okay. In the first place, I think we need to distinguish between digital devices that are part of a class or part of learning and digital devices that are used for extracurricular activities and personal use. I think it's important that we have some time with actual teachers so that students can ask questions, and that will facilitate learning. I think, I'm not sure what degree that they are using their individual devices, but if that becomes or is a problem, then we need to look at it, but I'm not familiar with that.
Thanks. So the data and research around this is relatively new, considering that the technology and access to technology is relatively new. The first few in-depth research studies show that it's detrimental for students to have so much screen time. At the same time, we're educators, and part of our job is enabling or preparing children to make good decisions and to function in reality outside of school, which requires digital literacy. And so I think a big mistake we're making is taking technology off the table as an educational tool. Not only should we be using it and harnessing the power and the knowledge and the skills that our students have, which is pop culture on their cell phones, but also teaching them how to use it responsibly, teaching them moderation, no different than we would teach them moderation or the skills with any other technology. Imagine if people said we shouldn't be using typewriters in the classroom, right? We can't be afraid of every technology. It's not going anywhere, kids are only gonna be using it more, and if we're not teaching them how to use it responsibly and productively, then that's a problem. Also, it's an equity issue because not a lot of students, especially students who are experiencing poverty or even homelessness, have computers at home. And so their cellphone is their only computer, is their only access to technology.
You know, I'm gonna punt this right back to the schools and know, and the educators, and say that this is in your court to know the best way to use this tool for your students. And that means bringing families on board and bringing parents and bringing the students on board and having this conversation about how we're gonna use this effectively. Because ultimately, you know, one of the things that ends up happening is this, this technology is foreign to even me, and I'm trying to be hip to it. And it's hard for us, but our young people get it, and they're using it. We have to be aware that it is actually causing harm to them because we are teaching them how to use it correctly. And it is a gateway for bullying, and it is a gateway for not really good mental health, and it is creating some bad things. And if we're not giving our students the tools to use this effectively, then that's on us. So I guess I'll leave it at that, but also realize that they're basically phasing these out so pretty soon you're just gonna be talking to like random things in holograms and, and I'm gonna have these in like fifteen years' time, so.
Yeah, this is, this is always a good one because I have my personal beliefs and then I have, you know, what I think is in the best interest of our students. And as my son used to get very irritated with us because the school board would make some decision that he didn't agree with, and I would say, I'm sorry, but in my house, I have one student, in my district, I have nineteen. I'm going to make a decision based on what's in the best interest of the nineteen. I think what's in the best interest of the nineteen thousand is that they learn how to navigate these digital devices in ways that keep them safe, prepare them for the jobs that don't even exist yet. But it seems counterproductive to me to restrict the use of these devices. And when I'm talking about devices, I'm saying not only my cellphone, but iPads, Chromebooks. This is also an equity issue. If students don't have access to the devices that they need to compete in the big world, then that's an equity issue. And if we can provide those within the public school system, then I think it's an incumbent upon us to do that. I think that is also part of what we've been talking a lot about, which is equity. I think the important thing is that we keep them safe and teach them how to use and navigate that so that it's productive and enriching and not detrimental and damaging.
I don't have a whole lot more to add. I, you know, agree with a lot that I've heard. Again, I think I would depend on the, I think the question was how much time should devices be used in the classroom? And again, I don't know enough about the research that, you know, there's research that says, you know, twenty minutes, thirty minutes. I don't know that. I would also say that I would trust and depend on educators to make certain that however we're using that digital devices for blended learning is appropriate for the lesson, is appropriate. So if we need to go to an open source for something, then I would depend on the educators to make certain that we're using this in the manner that makes sense for us to use it. And I, we're using a textbook, if we're using materials from outside, I just want to make certain that it is appropriate how we are using it.
Great. I made an executive decision that this is gonna be the last question, and then we're gonna do closing statements. I've seen some yawns. As engaging as all of your answers are. Right? Yeah, okay. So last question goes to Tracy. How will you fund career and technical education and encourage support for careers and trades?
How will you fund it and how will you support careers and trades? I, going back to the budget, it's a reflection of your values. If that's something that's important to our constituents, then we have to figure out how to find a sustainable funding source for it. I think, this is a, this is a sticky one for me because I've also seen how career and technical education is kind of pushed on students of color, so I have to be careful for that. You know, students of color historically have been seen as the laborers and not the intellectuals. And so, you know, I have to just push back on that a little bit. I think also partnering with community-based organizations that support technical trades is a good idea. And so we share the cost, and it's not a hundred percent on the district to pay for it, is another route to go. But yeah, it just, everything, everything we're talking about, and not just at the district level, but at the state level. And so I feel like it's really the job of school board directors to advocate on the state level for fully funding education too, because it's not a hundred percent the school district who's responsible for that funding issue, it's the state too. But yeah, if that's something that's important and that's what our community wants, then we have, we have to find a way to get it.
Yeah, I wanna agree with, we don't want to accidentally create this dynamic or we're perpetuating some inequity by moving people into a type of work that is backbreaking, right? Saying that, it's also a great, great opportunity to elevate your family out of poverty, some of these jobs. And the reality is that what we should be doing is getting, in this century, in this time that we're living in, our kids need to learn how to do some of this, and they're gonna need to learn how to do some of that. Our kids are gonna need to know how to do two or three, four jobs because that is what it's like now. So if they get to learn what it's like to build a house and also learn how to program, we should be providing those kind of opportunities for our young people. So I believe that we do have to partner up with local pre-apprenticeship programs. I think something, we have a STEM bus that goes around all the different schools and exposes our students to technology, why don't we have a vocational bus? Why don't we give our kids an opportunity to change the oil in their parking lot? Why don't we give those opportunities? Yes, we're trying to consolidate everything we do with PSSC, and I get that, that we, these programs are expensive, and we wanna give those, the students, the opportunity to go to a PSSC to learn these kind of things, because that's what we need to do. But we need to bring it to the school level and give them the opportunities to be exposed to these vocational opportunities. And also, we- Um, and also realize that we don't want to um, perpetuate inequity, so.
So this is, this is always uh, an interesting one to think about too. Because uh, to me, I, I, I see a successful graduate of Highline School District being a, a student who is prepared and able to follow their heart's desire. I don't define that for them. I would have loved to have known that what I wanted to be when I grow up, I'm still trying to figure out what I'll be when I grow up. But making sure that they're exposed to and have access to all of the opportunity that may kindle that interest. When it comes to careers and trades, I think that we have had such a college-going culture that I wonder and, and a little concerned that for the students who don't see that as their heart's desire, have we served them well? I want them to be capable of pursuing that, and if that's college, then we certainly wanna support and encourage that. But we have partners, Boeing, we worked with Boeing. And we have students graduating from Puget Sound Skills Center going straight into manufacturing and thrilled with it. High-paying, living more than living wage jobs, careers. And so I think making sure that we're leveraging the work we're doing, we're attracting interests because we all know that we cannot do this alone. We have to engage businesses. Businesses want to engage us. So where can we, as board members in an educational system, where can we work with those businesses to provide the opportunities for our students? I think that's a really critical thing as we move forward, especially around careers and technical.
Yeah, thank you. I, um, I constantly ask myself, and I think that uh, part of what we all need to ask is, what is the purpose of education? What is the purpose of, of uh, education institutions? And so, um, and, and I think that when we, when we answer that and get to a certain belief systems, then we will get to um, what it is that we, we value, um, and then our dollars will, will follow that as well. And again, that's our federal uh, legislated dollars, our state legislated dollars, our, and our, and our local dollars. And so I think that um, I was just, we were just at another candidate forum and someone asked me, um, you know, what happened with uh, the Puget Sound Skills Center? There used to be like 40, you know, uh, vocational offerings and now there's like 14. I don't know if that's true or not. However, I think that um, that the question is, um, you know, well, if the dollars are not there, we need to, one, identify, again, it's not, it doesn't just rest at the school district, again, but federally, locally, uh, state. Um, and then, as Bernie was saying, again, we need to engage the business communities. I think that where districts uh, uh, get in trouble sometimes is by think, by, by iso, by, by operating in a vacuum. And so, uh, we know that education is, is not, is underfunded, it's not funded. Uh, and so we just need to make certain that we are maximizing um, systems across the state. Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's great that we have a Puget Sound Skills Center and the occupations that they learn about there. Um, but they have reduced the number of types of things. And I think part of the problem is that because of the funding issues, we've allowed other school districts to use our Puget Sound Skills Center because they pay to use it. And then that means less space for the children in the Highline School District. So a lot of it's a funding issue. Um, I agree, it would be good to uh, work with employers and uh, unions, uh, and other groups outside the school district to assist us with uh, getting people prepared for what they wanna do. Even if they don't know what they wanna do, like my uh, sons, when they graduated from Mount Rainier High School, they didn't really know what they wanted to do. But I think if they are, uh, have, have some idea what they wanna do, that the Puget Sound Skills Center can be beneficial, especially if we work to make it even more broad and in more people being able to go to it. Okay, um, we'll do the two-minute closing statements and start with Erin.
Um, I think this whole campaign, I've been trying to be very intentional about doing unorthodox things. So I wanna spend a little bit of time recognizing my opponent Tracy, cause she's a badass. She's an amazing, amazing leader. And the reason it was 17 votes that separated both of us is because we're both great candidates and no matter what, no matter what, Highline School District is gonna come up this fall because one of us is gonna be on the board. Um, so with that said, um, I think what I bring to the game is that I've been uh, committed to this community, I'm gonna continue to be committed to this community. I've been part of the Capital Facilities Advisor Council with some amazing, amazing co-people. I've been working to make sure that our, our area, uh, Zone One gets recognized and supported. People know that I'm gonna put so much time and energy and effort into this because this is my home, this is my community, I'm trying to build this community up. Um, and I'm gonna continue to do this regardless of what ends up happening this November. Uh, so, um, I don't know, uh, I think I'll just leave it at that. Uh, and thank you so, so much for everybody who put in the time to come out here, to be engaged, to ask questions. This is what democracy looks like, us reaching out, learning, challenging, and being part of the process. Thank you.
Yeah, and so I, I also wanna thank everyone for the opportunity. This, it, it's interesting when you run for office, uh, you put yourself out there. And, and I think quite frankly, the way our society is continuing to evolve, people aren't really willing to put themselves out there. But at some point, you have to say, well, it's important to me, so I've gotta get involved. I learned a long time ago that if you don't like the way something's going, then you roll up your sleeves and you try to help figure it out collectively, right? I can't do it as a single board member. Aron can't do it as a single board member, nor can Tracy, nor Faiza, nor Jeanette. We're a team. And I think as equally important as who those board members are, I think it's critically important of how they function together and collectively. We can come in with an individual idea, but I cannot tell you the number of times that I have gone into a work session, a meeting, and had an opinion about an issue and had it modified. Because I have the good fortune to sit at a dais with four other individuals and I think it's important that we keep our ears and eyes open and we keep our willingness to compromise in an effort to meet the needs of our community. It's a tremendous responsibility. None of us take it lightly. It's an, it's a, it's a, it's a responsibility that feels heavy sometimes. Because as I see students and I see people out in the community, I often wonder to myself, how did we serve them? Because this is servant leadership. How did we serve them? Were we successful? Did we do them justice? Are we making the world a better place? And are we equipping them to make the world a better place? And I think at the end of the day, for me, that's what school boardsmanship is about, is being committed, invested emotionally, intellectually, with trying to make the world a better place, but most importantly, trying to develop the next generation of leaders. Because that's where all of our futures are. So thank you, I appreciate the opportunity.
Um, my husband thanks you all for listening to me for two hours because now I've not been too near when we get home. I'm tired. Um, but I, you know, it's, it's hard to kind of, uh, you know, surmise in, in two minutes. Um, and so that's why I just use a little levity. Um, I'm, you know, I, my heart, my dedication, my soul, uh, I'm called to do this work. I'm called to do what I'm doing. I'm called to be an advocate, a voice, uh, for, for those that don't have voice or whose voices are not being heard and elevated. I too am going to do that regardless. Um, someone uh, recently read something uh, on the LinkedIn or whatever, wherever it was, I'm not real social media, so, um, uh, as my campaign advisors tell me, you're supposed to be posting, I'm like, okay. Um, but anyway, um, it says something to the effect of, you know, if you have a seat at the table and you don't speak, then you need to get up from the table. And so I'm going to be at the, if the people elect for me to be at the table, I'm going to be at the table and I'm going to speak out on behalf of the people. I'm going to center the marginalized because I believe that a, uh, uh, when we raise the tide of, of one, one boat, we raise the tide of all, all boats. And so, um, again, I just, I, I, I hope that you all will allow for me to maintain this continuity and uh, uh, on the, on the board and to continue to do the work that is not immediate. I won't, I won't see the harvest that I'm, that I'm planting now. However, I will plant the seeds, I will speak up for, for those that can't speak. Um, and I'm gonna do just the best job that I can do. Thank you.
Thank you all again for coming and um, some of the things I was gonna say in my closing, I already said in my answer, so. Um, I do wanna say that it's important that we have school board members that are not just to go, gonna go along with the administration and have someone that has other sources of information. And I believe I fulfill those requirements. I have experience working with other elected officials, like when I was on the Des Moines City Council and also when I was a state representative. And I would like to um, say that I think some of the things that we've been talking about here this evening are things that need to be changed at the state level. And I think that we should use our positions on the school board to talk with other school board members and with legislators to make some changes at the state level. Um, when I was on the council before, I read all the packets of information as soon as I got them, pretty much so I could have enough time to figure out what questions I wanted to ask and also to propose some amendments uh, to the things that were being proposed. I'll work very hard to be prepared for the school board meetings and I work hard to make access to parents easy and effective. And uh, I think it's important that the uh, the school board work for all the students just like everyone else has said, and that's what I would intend to do. Um, and I would appreciate your vote. Uh, remember, my name is Jeanette Burridge, it rhymes with courage.
Aron stole my thunder, cause I was gonna share the love for him too. And I agree that regardless of who is on the board, Highline will be in good hands. And um, just as much as Erin is deep in the community, I'm deep in education. And so that's what I bring to the table. Um, I've been an educator, I'm an administrator, I was Teacher of the Year in the Puget Sound District. I am an advisory board member of Teaching Tolerance, which is the education program of the Southern Poverty Law Center. Um, I have networks with professors and scholars across our state and across the country that are all deep in especially racial justice education. And so that's the expertise that I bring to that, including my, my own formal education. And so, um, I think the way that that's helpful is I, I know what to look for and I know what questions to ask and I know which district administrators to press for certain things, right? Because I am a district administrator. And so, um, I think that my success will be in accountability for district administrators and making sure that they're not keeping information from the board that the board needs to know. Um, and if you wanna know more about me and what I do, you can go onto my website. It's www dot teacheractivist dot com. And uh, there's a link to all of my platform ideas and also a link to my resume, so you can see what that's about. Um, and so, yeah, either way, we're good.
All right, thank you so much, and I'm gonna turn the mic over to Becky Cox for final words.
First of all, I wanna thank all of you for brave, come out on a dark, windy and rainy night and appreciate that you came and I hope you've learned something. I want to remind you, the little board, whiteboard back there, where we'd like to have you check off, uh, as to what, how you felt about the meeting we had tonight and our wonderful candidates. We have very excited to hear all of your views.